Start the special session of the Board of County Commissioners and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Just right in front of me.
You've got to move.
Well, I prepared a script, but I'm gonna go off-script because y'all know me. I'm Ed Humphrey, David Hubel, David Painter are here. We're here to hear about the operating motor vehicle public, uh, public roads and highways, a proposed annual tax increase. And we have a court recorder, so please state your name and address for the record before you start to speak. And that's all I know. So we're gonna start with Pat telling us the background.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Podium.
I think everything's set up.
Alright, very good, thank you.
He has a mic and everything.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Ed. Again, my name is Pat Monger, I'm the Claremont County Engineer. Here tonight to give some, an update on the proposed permissive fee increase to the registration of motor vehicles. Start out with just a brief background. House Bill 26 was also known as the Transportation Bill. This became effective last June, so June of 2017, which allowed the county commissioners to adopt this legislative action, which would add $5 permissive fee, which in turn goes to the county engineer's operation to maintain roads and bridges. In this particular case, we would pledge it for our highway road program. If it was authorized and put in place, effective, and we could make all the timeframes that we need to, which is through the hearings and all the, all the specifics, by July 1st, the tax would then come in, become effective January of 19, January 1 of 19. So, again, a little bit of background relative to the current revenue sources for the engineer's office and the operation. Two, two main sources you can see here are licensed, the current license tax that are in place, which represent $15 to the county. That generates $7.2 million last year. And then the gasoline tax, which is currently, in Ohio, 28 cents a gallon. Those fees are collected and at the state level and then distributed back to each of the 88 counties. So every county engineer gets a, a, a share of that gasoline tax, which last year was $2.3 million.
Equal share, not just?
Equal share, an equal share, exactly. So that, that's equal, the license fees are relative to how many registrations you have in your county. Of note, each one of those at the bottom, it's, it was back in 2001 was the last time the Board of County Commissioners added a $5. The last $5 fee was in '01. And then the last time the state gas tax was raised was in 2005. You had a quick comment?
Yeah, just to clarify the gasoline tax, when you're talking about that, that's distributed equally amongst the 88 counties and that is not based on population, that is just strictly based on?
Correct.
One eighty-eight of the total gasoline tax.
Correct.
Okay.
So it was around 200 million that was collected statewide, and if you divide that by 88, you get the 2.3 number.
Got it.
2.3 million. So Brown County Engineer got 2.37, I got 2.7, and Hamilton County Engineer, every county engineer in Ohio got that number last year.
So the, so the only thing that differentiates whether you collect more money than one county or another is literally how many?
Registrations.
Vehicles you have that have license.
Correct. How many vehicle registrations you have in your county.
Yep.
So obviously, a county, an urbanized county like Claremont, the bulk of, of the revenue that the engineers has to operate their operation on is based on the population, we're a larger, more urbanized county. So it's roughly 75, 25 split between those two revenue sources.
And in rough, rough numbers, we have about 235,000?
That's what we had last year, we had 235 total. About 5,000 of those were commercial vehicles, so if you get right down to the, to the number, about 230,000.
Okay.
Again, just trying to put this in perspective, I mentioned earlier that the gas tax last was increased in, it was two pennies in '03, two pennies in '04, two pennies in '05. And then the last time any kind of fees have been raised relative to registration fees was way back in '01. So here's kinda what those look like, those revenue sources. The top line is the, the bigger of the two sources, that's a registration. So you can see it's, it has gone up since '05 to 2017, but not, that's the good news, I guess. The bad news is it's averaging less than a percent a year in terms of an increase. From the gasoline tax, same thing, back in '05, it, it has gone up, but again, just right at 1% a year in terms of those yearly increases. The, in contrast to the revenues, we look at the rising cost of materials, and this is a snapshot of our asphalt costs that we have. We try to put it in terms that people might relate to, in terms of cost per mile. You know, as engineers, we can get real tech, you can say cubic yards and tons and all those sorts of things, but we wanted to put it in terms that maybe you can relate to. It's, and we had some questions raised, I think by Frank, yeah, Frank ran the other day about his costs and things like that. And it, it can be, it's not meant to be misleading, but it can be a little bit misleading in terms of, when you look at the holistic cost of, of what we have to do to repair our roads, there's a lot of base repair that goes into it. These numbers reflect those costs, not just the, you know, the top course or the icing on the cake, if you will. It's, it's everything that goes into maintaining the roads. So you can see those costs have increased, well, they more than doubled over the last 13 years. And if you analyze that, it's over 8% increase. So if you compare that to our revenues, increasing at less than 1%, and a major source of expense increasing over 8%, you can see, I don't think you have to be a major economist to figure out that those two lines, those two situations don't work. Some of the things that we've done, I've done, in terms of controlling expenses, since I've been in office, is, you know, if I couldn't control, you know, the revenues are set through the state, they're set through the House and the Senate and how, how they decide to, if they allow permissive tax, like they did back in '01, to come on, like they did again in 17 to come on. If they allow that, that's, 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 you know, totally up to them. Obviously, same situation with the gas tax, if that gets increased, it's certainly beyond the abilities or the, my influence. So if you can't control your revenues, you better control your expenses. And one of the things that we've been able to do, that I've been able to do as county engineer, is to deal with it through employees and through salary. So you can see here, from '05 to 17, it certainly has gone up, about three-quarters of a million over that 13 period, years of time. But again, if you analyze that and amortize that over 13 years, you're looking at a little over, you know, percent and a half, 1.6% per year in increase in payroll. So we're doing everything we can to try to keep, you know, obviously, the revenues that we do have, that are increasing very, very slowly in terms of percentage-wise. But even compared to this, I think Mr. Humphrey, you pointed out, you know, just even comparing, you know, payroll to our revenues, even, you know, our revenues are increasing 1% and our payrolls at 1.6. So I mean, even those lines are gonna cross.
And you've had a reduction in staff in order to keep it?
Yes, and one of the major things that we've done over the last 10-plus years, we're, we're down 10 people operational. You know, we've had some people that have retired and we haven't replaced them, and we've just tried to do, do more with less. But we're really out of options at this point in time. We're falling further and further behind with, with the, the costs of delaying those needed and necessary road repairs are, are, are really, those costs are, not only are costs going up, but the amount of work that we need, because the, the damage to the roads are, are more significant. We have to dig deeper, so to speak, to make those. So I wanted to, you know, point out the fact that, you know, the first thing, you know, we don't look to outside, the first thing we do is, you know, obviously, look in to try to make our operation more efficient, more streamlined, more, more economical, for lack of a better word. But we're, and we, we've done that over the last decade. So, moving on, if we, if this was approved, what, what likely might we see? Obviously, additional $5 would generate approximately a million dollars. All of the revenues would be dedicated towards the road program. You know, we're not looking at hiring people, we're not looking at buying, you know, equipment, we're not looking at doing anything other than putting 100% of this money right back into the roads that are so needed and desperate to be repaired. You know, our current levels, because again, if you go back, you know, with these costs per mile, you know, the million or so dollars that we have allocated for the road program, it just doesn't have the buying power it did 13 years ago. And so we're, we're getting, you know, less miles done per year. We still have 400 miles of road to maintain, and so simple math tells you that we're on a, you know, nearly 40-year cycle of, with the current budget. So we fuse this million dollars into the program, we can, we could cut that in half, or nearly in half, and it's still not great, but it's way better than 38 years. And that's, that's really the pitch, is that, you know, obviously, revenues have increased, but they've been modest. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know, but I think a lot of people wouldn't say 1% is pretty flat in terms of, you know, cost of living adjustments and things like that. We've done everything we can do on our end from a, from a overhead perspective, if you will, and not replacing people when they retire or move on. And these, these dollars are, are absolutely critical to, to the continued success of, for Claremont County. Next steps, after we have some more meet, we have another hearing tomorrow night, and a time period for, for comments and so on and so forth. And should this move forward and the, and the board take action? And all of the other steps, be Ts crossed and Is dotted, so to speak? It could be in place for, you know, registrations that take effect in January of 19. And the way that some of the reds, companies register their vehicles, we could see some revenues maybe in, as early as October, because they can register three months ahead of time. But the vast majority, obviously, would, would, registrations would take place in January. One sort of correction or modification to a question that we had the other day was, well, how would, who would it affect? And I, I said passenger vehicles, and they, and they asked about trailers, and I said no. I, I was misinformed. And so I wanna correct the record saying that the, the registrations, they're, the Ohio's definition of motor vehicles extend beyond passenger vehicles. So we're looking at passenger cars, motorhomes, motorcycles, house vehicles, mopeds, unconventional vehicles, non-commercial trailers, non-commercial trucks, and farm trucks and buses, and then what they consider to be non-IRP trucks. And so the IRP is the, an international registration plan that all 50 states and territories and, and up north share in the revenue for these multi-jurisdictional companies that have trucks running all over. So there's, that's, that's the, the affected registrations relative to this action. They're currently paying the, the, the permissive fee on all of those registrations. So for example, we had 235,000 registrations in Claremont County in 2017. Roughly 5,000 of those were the IRP, so those would be exempt from that $5. Only 5,000, so it's not a, it's not a big percentage. So roughly at 230,000 vehicles would, registrations, I should say, or types of vehicles, but the registrations would be affected by this legislation. And I think, let's see, I think I'm forgetting something. There was, was there any, any other questions that you guys remember? Oh, Mr. Ren asked about the bridge. There was some, some, uh, bridge settlement relative, to a, a road settlement relative to a bridge job we backed, we did years ago. And we, again, looked into that and sent some pictures around. Just to give the board an update on that, there was a, there was a project on Neville Penn that, was it Neville Penn?
Mount Pisgah.
Mount Pisgah, I'm sorry. Mount Pisgah. And it includes some roadwork as well as a, a bridge replacement and 20, nearly 25 feet of fill associated with this road embankment and bridge embankment. We had, I think it was a little over an inch of settlement in the area, was, was the area of concern. We've been monitoring it, monitoring it, and it hasn't gotten worse. And it'll be a situation that when we come back in and repave, hopefully, less than 38 years from now, that will, that small little deflection will be remedied, so.
In fact, I guess, most of your expenses made up of payroll and maintenance, or roadwork.
Mm-hmm.
That's most of your expenses.
Right.
Over the last 15 years, the income coming in from registration, taxes, gas taxes, it's been relatively flat.
Right.
Years. Your payroll has been relatively flat, but the price of asphalt has doubled, which tells me you're only laying half, past the, half the asphalt.
Right.
So you're only resurfacing half the asphalt that you used to?
Right. That's the reason why we're on that 38-year cycle. You know, years ago, when I first, well, when I first arrived back in '01, we were doing 35, 40 miles a road a year. And so we were on that 10, 12, 15-year cycle. And all of those factors that you just mentioned contributed to the fact that just, it's just, it's just added time to the, to the cycle. And, and we have been pretty successful over the years. It, it sort of ebbs and flows with state grants and different things like that, especially Ohio Public Works. But it's not a guarantee, it's a competitive process. Some years will, you know, will be really successful. I know two, three years ago, I mean, we're just, we're just wildly successful. We had four, five million dollars and we were able to, so it's been things like that that has allowed us to, you know, but it's hit or miss. You can't really count on it. Whereas this revenue would be dedicated, it would be something that we could rely on those revenues, count on those revenues, and we could start to whittle down and get, get those life cycles back down to where they really need to be, which is way less than 20 years.
When, when you're talking asphalt paving, roadwork and bridges, what's a percentage of force account work that you do yourself versus subcontract work?
It's a good question. And I think I have a choice that might help me answer that question. A road program, it's, 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 and it, and it fluctuates from year to year. I would say our, our force account is pretty consistent at around a half a million dollars is what our force account program, we replace bridges and culverts and things like that. And last year's road program, or 2017's expenses was right at a million in contracted. So I, I would say that's a fairly typical, you know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's two-to-one ratio, however, you know, however you wanna, you know, if we spend a million to a million and a half in, in road program, it's five to 600,000 in force account. So it's usually a two-to-one relationship like that.
You generally staff more for the winter storms and putting down salt than you do?
Certainly a major consideration in the operation. The other thing that affects force account is the force account limits. We are regulated by the state, by the statute. Bridges and culverts, we can, we can do a project up to $100,000. So there's a, there's an assessment that we do in the front end, so we do an estimate, we, we outline how much, how much dollar, how many, how much hours, equipment, manpower, all that. And there's a factor, and you factor it up for overhead and all this kind of things. And it's, that's a, that's a form that the state auditor created. So we use that, it's a force account assessment form, we fill that out, the number comes in at, you know, I'll be, I'll be facetious here, but 99,999 dollars, that we technically do it ourselves. If it's $1,000 or $100,000 and a penny, then we have to bid it out, you know? And so that, that factors into what we can do and what we can't do with the force account.
That's the $5 of the allocated, as you said, to the county highway road program.
Right.
But in terms of villages and townships, it doesn't affect them at all, correct?
Correct.
Only county roads?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Very good. Any other questions for Pat from the, okay. So it's now time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address us, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the court recorder and give us your comments.
Ramona Carr. My address is 211 Market Street, New Richmond. As mayor of New Richmond, I was asked by council to come and attend. The majority of village council, just through their comments at the meeting last week, do not support the additional tax because it does not help the village streets. And so I didn't want to do diligence. But I do understand we all drive on county roads. I, I want that, no.
My name is Greg Roberts. I live at 1324 Claremontville Laurel Road of the Road Township. I live on a county road. And I'm going to give you first my opinion as a individual resident and, again, one who appreciates what the county does as far as maintaining the roads. And you guys did a wonderful job last go-around in terms of paving Claremontville Laurel. A wonderful job, and I appreciate that. As village administrator here in New Richmond, I have to echo what the mayor has to say in terms of what council says, in terms of, it does affect the village, yes. Our village residents will be paying the $5 license fee, and so it will affect them in terms of cost. As far as benefit, yes, as Ramona said, yes, we do drive on county roads. Most of our folks do. The only county road that comes into the village of New Richmond is Bethel and Richmond Road. And currently, the county stops paving at the Union Station subdivision. And from there on, until you reach just short of St. Peter's Church, one side is the village of New Richmond, the other side is county road, is, is Union, or Ohio Township. And so there's a in-county maintenance sign up at Union Station. And so, again, it's assumed that we're responsible, and it's, and it's always been a question, Pat, maybe you can answer this for me, is that we have a similar situation on a township road, where the township maintains the road till it gets to the village limit, where both sides of Grace Lane, in this case, are in the village. But it's kind of strange and always, to me, that the opposite situation has occurred on Bethel and Richmond Road, where the county maintains it to where half of Bethel and Richmond, the one side is in, is in the village and the other half is in, is in Ohio Township. And I don't know if that is common or?
It is, it really all depends on how the annexation action took place.
Okay.
And again, I don't know off the top of my head how, how Bethel and Richmond took place, but I know just a few years ago, by, by the office up there of Bauer, a similar situation, Village Batavia annexed into Batavia Township. And it only, the, the way that they drew up the map and the documents, which is the applicant's doing, not the, not, you know, the county just takes action on those annexation hearings, I guess they're called.
Petition.
Petitions. So yeah, it varies. Sometimes it's, I mean, I personally, we always advocate to try to do the whole road, one way or the other.
Your, your map shows it, a county road all the way to, to St. Peter's Church where, so, but again.
Right. But it happens, it happens, where it's half and half, and sometimes.
She might get a little support from us here in the village if, if you take responsibility for that, that part of Bethel and Richmond, because it's about a half to three-quarters of a mile. And, and for us, that's a large expense. I know you guys have 400 miles of road, we have roughly 20 miles of road in the village. We just did a traffic study, which showed the same thing you just presented. We're, to, at the current budget, we're gonna, we've got about a 40-year cycle to, to repave our roads here. So we're in the same boat you are in, in terms of road maintenance. And, and so, so we're forced, if we're gonna do any better, either to generate other revenue, either coming into our general fund, or beg, borrow and steal through grants and whatever we can get. And so, you know, we don't have this gift from the state in terms of putting, putting a $5.
You actually do have the ability to put on, there are, currently on the books, there, there's a $5 fee that municipalities can put on, regardless of whether the county has theirs in place or not. And so the municipalities that have that in place currently are Amelia, Loveland and Milford.
Okay.
So you guys are at, you're with the other 10 municipalities in Claremont County, that being the village of, or, you know, Batavia, Bethel, Chilo, Felicity, Moscow, Neville, New Richmond, Newtonsville, Owensville and Williamsburg. So that's, that's available to you.
Well, enlighten me then, is, is it up to $5?
$5, yes.
Or is it $5?
Five dollars.
Five, five, five feet.
Previous?
I don't have the numbers in front of me of what that would generate for the village, but that is, that is a, action that you can, that is available to you as we speak.
Chris, he may want you to solicit to look into that, that was, law that was passed a long time ago, probably 15, 20 years ago.
I think it goes back to 90, 98, wasn't it? 97 or 98 was the first in, but of the enacted, New Richmond has $15. It's enacted there through the enactments, and there's five more dollars in there that was never enacted by the village of New Richmond. So it's there.
Alright, well, thank you.
Hey, Pat, is, do villages count? I know when we bid out road resurfacing, we do townships, but the villages, can they get in on that as well?
We have over the years, but we, we, the last couple of years, we've, for a variety of reasons, haven't done that, but if, if it works out in the future, they would be eligible to participate as well. I know Milford did back in the day.
You're familiar with that, right? So we bid out the projects.
So I'm a little confused, I guess. There's this road, and you told me the name of it, but I saw Bethel and Richmond, and it's county road until it gets to a point, and then one side becomes village and one side becomes township. I'm just wondering why it doesn't continue to stay county on the one side as opposed to township, because if it was county road, it's a county road, and somebody annexed half of it?
I believe it is.
Huh?
I think it is, county road on half.
Well, again.
We might wanna look.
There's a, there's an end-of-county maintenance sign right toward you, coming to what is, again, and you're going out of the village toward Bethel, a right-hand side up to Union Station is within the road limits, and the left-hand side, and again, I'm a talker, some old timers, to talk about the annexation of that property, and that may be a little right, and that there were probably some discussions, or, again, I haven't dug deep enough in the village archives to see if there was any kind of agreements in terms of, of maintenance of Bethel and Richmond at that point.
Does a village, does a village have sewers on the right-hand side of that road? Is that where that went through?
Uh, yes.
That's? That's. Right.
Okay.
I'll look into that and have a full report tomorrow.
All righty.
There you go.
We just keep asking this. Anyone else would you like to speak, sir?
It's Y Y West.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Steve Hack. I live at twenty-one ten Beach Cove, just up Frank Willis and a little private development association. We pay for our own road maintenance in our association. I am sixty-eight years old, retired, have a, my wife has a vehicle, I have a vehicle. That'd be ten dollars more a year on my license. One of my vehicles is just a standard pickup truck and I'm paying seventy-five dollars for that. It's not a, it's not a commercial vehicle, it's just a pickup truck. I think that's what my license plates are. I just got rid of a Suburban, they were very high as well. And I did get rid of the Suburban because of all the hassles and I don't need three vehicles for two drivers. So being retired, fixed income, I'm totally against five dollars. I don't care if it's a dollar, we got to stop somewhere. And so that's kind of my point, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's everyone here, I believe. So if anyone wants to speak again, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. This was a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I want to thank you all for attending tonight. And remember, this next public hearing is tomorrow night in the village of Batavia at seven o'clock at their new city building, city building, which is the old Arman. We'll see you tomorrow night, for those of us that will be there. Thank you for attending.